Today's date is July 24, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. There are no chairman's opening remarks today. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing, none. Poll for conflicts of interest. None here. We will begin with a public hearing. This is O R A 25-0003. Boarding stables, riding arenas, and equine training. And we have Ben Tarbutton listed here, but we're going to have our director, David Callahan, start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will open this up because Ben is ill today. But I can tell you, this has two parts to it. You may recall, we discussed one of the parts, which is it proposes to authorize the director to approve final major subdivisions, all for efficiency and expediency. And so that's laid out as part of this. The other portion, I don't know that you're familiar with, I'll drill down on for just a moment, has to do with boarding stables, equestrian centers, and so on. The reason that's before you is that it's been an interpretational problem in the past. By that, I mean, in the 2016 code, we consolidated boarding stables and commercial riding arenas in ways that made it necessary for us to interpret how the code actually is expressed. And a quick example of that is if you look on our, in today's code, under our tables, where it talks about uses, it shows commercial riding arenas or equine training centers as requiring conditional use permits. But in other parts of the code, we've co-mingled boarding stables, and it's less clear that a boarding stable needs a CUP. And so all of this is really to clarify, eliminate confusion, eliminate the need for interpretation, and to make it unambiguous that a boarding facility can be a by right use in agricultural and other zones. And so this really, in a nutshell, streamlines, reduces cost for people because they won't necessarily have to go through a CUP, and eliminates the interpretational part of this. I will just add on one quick thing, and then I'm done unless you have questions. We did have an appeal under our interpretation in the past. That was two years ago. The hearing examiner sided with the then staff interpretation, which was that this particular use needed a conditional use permit. But the hearing examiner also suggested that we should make these changes. And so that appeal never actually reached you because the applicant was fine with us processing it as a cottage industry, which we have done. But all of that would be unnecessary if we had these changes then, like we are asking for now. So I hope that explains everything, but of course, we're here if you have questions. Oh, and one last thing I forgot to mention. We didn't actually show in the ordinance, which is in your packet, that we should be amending tables that relate to this, like Table 2, where it talks about commercial riding arenas. I'm hopeful that our legal counsel agrees that you could just authorize us to make those kinds of changes as administrative necessities, all as part of this code amendment.
Any questions? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Pat Braden, Civil Department prosecutor, just to accept David's invitation to speak to that. I think we can make the change to the table. If the board is inclined to approve this code amendment, I think we can include the change, the necessary change to the table as part of it.
So you don't need that in the motion?
I would say to, you know, in the motion, that it would be to approve and including the change of Table 2-1103.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone here? Actually, I have a comment here. Julie McGuire may wish to speak.
I'd like to know what the changes are that are being made. I'd like to have a review of it.
Well, let me see if there's anyone else who would like to speak about this. Is there anyone who would like to speak for the new ordinance? Anybody online? Anybody like to speak against the new ordinance?
I don't know. I don't know what the ordinance is at this point. I was just informed of this yesterday.
Okay. Anyone online? No?
Maybe David can give just a...
Yeah, David?
Commissioners, I forgot to mention, we advertised this and held a public hearing on June 26 with the planning commission. No one spoke at that hearing, but the planning commission did unanimously recommend approval.
So I...
And I dare say, in a nutshell, this fixes Ms. McGuire's issue. And so it should work in her favor.
Yes.
And without these changes, we still have the problem that caused her to actually appeal our decision in the first place.
Right.
And so this will streamline the process and allow her to engage in the activity that she has brought before, I think, some of the commissioners?
Yes, sir. And we actually did approve a cottage industry for her, but that we held in abeyance because we found other issues on site that we are still working with Ms. McGuire to resolve.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. McGuire, did you still want to speak?
Can I just have a minute to review this? I was not informed of the meeting in June or any of this, and considering...
Yeah. We just typically don't notify specific individuals.
Yeah. So we're on next door, so they're hearing every, they're hearing. Sorry, folks, this is one room, and apparently next door is hearing everything over the microphone, so hopefully we can get that.
Yeah, and that's the other side of the partition, not next door.
Correct. Yeah, other side, yeah. Yeah. Craig, are you able to churn it off? Okay.
Are we good now? Okay.
Perfect. Thanks.
So we don't normally notify individuals, per se, of these kinds of issues.
It was noticed because of Mary's usual ways. So anyone that had an interest could have...
Yeah. But like you said, the intent is to address an issue related to Ms. McGuire's. And so, you know, the hope is, is that we can streamline this process and get her to where she wants to be, along with anyone else...
One else.
Who wants to engage in this activity.
That's exactly the case.
Okay. Ms. McGuire, I can't really hold up the public hearing for you to review this, but if there's something you want to say of what you were hoping it to have, or any...
I was just hoping to be educated about the situation.
Okay, well...
Staff can meet with you afterwards, but this is a move in the right direction to help folks like yourself able...
I was informed of that meeting.
Yes, okay.
All right. Anyone else want to speak about this issue, this ordinance? Going once? Twice? Okay. I would take a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Thoughts?
I think this is positive for both aspects of it, the final approval of major subdivisions and the elimination of confusion with the boarding stables, riding arenas, and equine training, making those more defined, and so it's easier for staff to make decisions.
Commissioner Eberlein?
I concur.
Well, with that said, I'll take a motion, and of course, we want to include the changes to the tables.
Yes. So I move that we approve O R A 25-0003, which is the boarding stables, riding arenas, equine training facilities, and final subdivision approval, along with amending the tables.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, this is a continuation of a public hearing, and this is for Z O N 24-0007, Elder Road East. And we also have Z O N 24-0008, Elder Road West. And Director Callahan, do you want to give us an update on that?
Commissioners, we met with the applicants again. We've worked through the issues. We believe we have a solution that's in your electronic packet. Their attorney has reviewed it. Our attorney's reviewed it. I believe everything's properly before you.
Right.
Any questions? Did you want to reply to that, just to let us know where...
I concur.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right.
Shortest testimony I've ever done.
Okay. Well, then, I have some public comment here for this.
Right. So Ray just gave his.
Yep, Ray.
And it's, I put them together.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Connie Brand, applicant in favor, wishes to speak.
I just wanted to say thank you again. I believe that we've all come to an agreement of where this should be and that it is going to be a good thing for our community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Brand, in favor, does not wish to speak. Let's see. Anyone else in favor who would like to speak? Anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay. Going once? Going twice? Anyone opposed who would like to speak? And we have Jillian Harmon from the CDA Tribe opposed and wishes to speak.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us the opportunity to speak on this issue again. The tribe would like to reiterate and incorporate the comments that we've made in the past. And I'd also like to provide some context on why the tribe opposes the development within the reservation boundaries. As anyone here who recreates on the Coeur d'Alene Lake is acutely aware, it's heavily pressured, heavily popular lake. It's incredibly popular. It's also incredibly polluted from not only historic mining waste, but also from pollution from recreation, increased tourism, and increased development. The Coeur d'Alene Lake is the lifeblood of the Coeur d'Alene people. It has provided the subsistence for the tribe since time immemorial, from fish caught within the lake to the wildlife that surround the lake, that use the habitat that is, that the lake provides and that is supported by the lake. Increased development and increased recreational opportunities decrease that habitat, decrease that open space. And all you have to do is look to the north side of the lake to see that. What do we see? We see houses, hotels, less open space. And what do we not see? We don't see elk herds. We see very few deer. We don't see moose anymore on the north side of the lake. Where do we see those? We see those on the south side of the lake. We see those because of the open space that is provided by the lack of development in the, on the south side of the lake, the side of the lake that the tribe owns. And the tribe has done that, has tried very hard to manage this intersection of allowing some development while also creating this open space and ability for this wildlife to persist and to be able to be harvested, not only by the Coeur d'Alene people for subsistence, but from local people all around who rely on being able to harvest an elk to feed their family, who rely on being able to harvest healthy fish populations to feed their families. This is incredibly important to the tribe and to local people in the area, like, the tribe's tried to really balance this wildlife management with development and has done, I think, a relatively good job. Increasing development and increasing opportunities for people to come in and recreate and increase tourism decreases the habitat that those animals need to be able to thrive, and that the people in the area need to be able to thrive by subsistence hunting and subsistence fishing. The tribe understands the difficulty in not being able to do what you want, what a landowner wants to do with their land. But often, an ecological balance, healthy ecosystems, healthy habitats, and healthy wildlife outweigh financial gain. And for those reasons, the tribe, again, opposes further development within the reservation in order to protect the resources that we have and in order to be able to live as a thriving Native American community and for the local people that live here as well. The tribe thanks the Commissioners for the opportunity to provide comment again and urges the Commissioners to deny this change. Thank you. If there's any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? No? Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak who opposes these zone changes? Anybody online?
No.
No? Ray, would you like to respond to any of that?
I would. Thank you, Ray Kimball, again, for the record. Just like to point out that while we appreciate the tribe's goals and concerns, comments made today were not necessarily relevant to the action at hand, and that the tri, and would definitely like to point out that the tribe has full jurisdiction over their own lands within the reservation boundary, and then the land owned by non-travel members, of course, is governed by you folks, Commissioners. And so, and those are two very distinct and separate things. The tribe has a very, quite a large amount of land on the reservation by which they can manage to get their goals, to achieve their goals. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have a question for staff. So after today, if the applicant moves forward with the projected uses, they come in for building permits, and then at that time, conditions usually address things like wildlife and stuff like that, depending on what the use is requested?
That's correct. We typically do referrals at the building permit stage.
Okay.
All of the agencies for which we normally conduct business, in this case, that would include the tribe.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I'll take a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Thoughts on this?
I appreciate the work in progress and how we've been able to come to consensus and allow a property owner to engage in their land to sustain their family. And I, again, it'll be addressed through the building permit process, any other items that might be of concern later.
I concur. My only thought on this is, we, I'm glad that we were able to work together towards getting a resolution for the applicant. I'm sorry that it ended up being something that...
Long and drawn out.
Long, in circles, the wrong direction, and things like that. I think that because it is down south in the county, the board does have to pay a little extra attention to what is done down there, as opposed to other parts of the county, and the uses. And so I believe that we should approve this, but I also believe that we should be just as diligent on any future applications, and maybe even more so because preserving that open space, I think, is very important. I think it's just the type of use in this particular case that makes it acceptable for what we're looking at doing. And so I agree with it, and with that said, I would take a motion.
I move that we approve Z O N 24-0007 and Z O N 24-008, Elder Road East and Elder Road West, with conditional zoning development agreements. And I think that's it.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next up are deliberations. The first one is V A R 25-0001. It's Larson variance. It's an action item. And we have Blake Seder.
Blake Seder with Community Development, here to present V A R 25-001, request for variance to front yard setbacks. The subject property... The subject property is located on the east side of Hayden Lake. It is waterfront. As noted here, is in the restricted residential zone, which has a typical setback from the front here of 25 feet. Looking at some of the site conditions, currently, it is relatively shallow from the street side, as it begins to, as you can see in this lower right-hand photo, steeply slope towards the water, making the portion that is within setbacks quite small for development. The applicant is requesting a 15-foot variance to that front yard setback to construct a residence upon the flatter portion as shown in the previous photos. This is evidenced not only by the photos, but also by the contour map, which shows it is quite steep on the backside here. In addition, the applicant has shown that parking off-street out of the right-of-way is also, or is still available with these reduced setbacks. As a part of the application, we required a geotechnical analysis, which supported development on the flatter portion, and that was provided by Brian Warden. During the public agency comment, all agencies approved or had no objections to the request. During the public comment portion, we did receive one comment expressing concerns over access for emergency vehicles down there. As you can tell, or as you may know, Hayden Haven is a dead-end road on the peninsula. We did request comment from the fire district to express that they have no concerns about being able to get down there and provide emergency services, so we believe that concern has been mitigated. It is, as a result, staff's analysis that an undue hardship is present due to steep slopes and that the hardship is not self-imposed, and we recommended approval. This was brought before the hearing examiner on June 19, who also subsequently recommended approval. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions?
Okay.
Thoughts on this?
Hi. It's pretty straightforward. That area is known for needing variances. And again, we'll eventually get an overlay, so these won't be variances and they won't come before us.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the executive summary, so I don't know if that was Craig's idea or what. I probably don't need color copies just to save some pennies, because I enjoyed reading it on the, in the packet, but I don't have an issue with this variance.
Commissioner Eberlein?
I'm familiar with that area, and I've done projects up there, and it is steep, but it's doable.
Yeah. Well, with that said, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve V A R 25-0001, and it's the Larson variance.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is CUP 25-0004, Bayview Bible Church. It's an action item, and we have Vlad Finkel from Community Development.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cooney County Community Development. This is a request for a place of assembly and worship. The subject property comprises five lots and approximately a little over two acres located in the Bayview area. The site is located near the intersection of Perimeter Road and Cape Horn Road. It is currently vacant, and it is heavily vegetated. It does have some slope sloping towards Perimeter Road and towards Pondere Lake. The zoning classification is restricted residential, and the comp plan designation is shoreline. The project will consist of a, the primary purpose of it is to have a place for Sunday worship and fellowship gathering place. The structure will be approximately 12,900 square feet and be available up to 300 people. There'll be a variety of different uses and activities throughout the week. The facility will be served by Bayview Water and Sewer District for domestic water supply, fire suppression needs, as well as treatment of effluent discharge. Access will be off of Perimeter Road. There are two access points that were... There are two access points that were previously granted by the Highway District with the approval of the underlying plat of Baywatch Estates. This is the conceptual layout of the subject property in question. You have the primary structure with two different parking areas and two access points off of Perimeter Road. These are the conceptual renderings of the subject property and the floor plans. This will be a daylight basement structure with a number of different uses and activities on each floor, based on the room allocation and various occupancy standards. During the agency comment period, pretty much all the agencies were on board. We had a couple of questions come up from the will serve letter submitted by the Bayview Water and Sewer District. Some of the comments from that agency were related to a plating requirement, which we advised their engineering consultant that we could not impose dedication of certain easements, or possibly right away through a conditional use permit process that can only be accomplished through a subdivision plating process, where those requirements would be dedicated on the face of the milars. And the consultant agreed with us, and therefore, they withdrew those requirements. We removed them from the conditions of approval as well. During the public comment period, there were three comments in support, one in opposition. The individual that submitted a written statement raised concerns with regards to additional traffic, visual impacts, and possibly strain on the Bayview Water and Sewer District facilities. During the public hearing on July third before the hearing examiner, we had an overwhelming number of individuals that showed up, close to a hundred people that showed up, who were in support of this application. They're members of the church, they voiced their comments of the benefit to the community that this facility will bring. I'd like to also enter into the record that it was brought to our attention that the congregation currently meets at the Bayview Community Center, and the architect on this project advised during the public hearing that the, the structure that the congregation currently meets is outdated, that it currently does not meet the required building code standards, and therefore, it's not the ideal place for those meetings to be conducted, and therefore, this would be a much better place with the new building code requirements that would be applied to this building permit application. One individual spoke in opposition. That individual owns land within the subject subdivision, and they kind of raised the same concerns as they did as part of the public comment period in a written form. But other than that, based on the staff recommendation and H E recommendation, we find that this is a, this is going to be a good benefit to the community, and therefore, we recommend approval of this request, along with the hearing examiner. And I stand for any questions that you have for me at this time.
Thank you. Questions?
Do they give hours of operation? I looked in the packet, I didn't really, nothing stood out to me.
They don't give hours of operation, because they will have different meetings and different things happening throughout the week. So there's really no set schedule, and typically, when we approve similar requests, there's not a schedule in place.
Okay, and then, of course, the lighting will be, it's addressed?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I'm just kind of curious, because when you look at the footprint, there's a lot of asphalt. And, you know, I've seen in other communities where, you know, when you have a lot of asphalt, you have runoff when you have rain and so forth. Has there been any analysis on that? And I realize that it's not fully developed in that area, but it does, you know, add up each additional development. Is that something that's being considered?
Absolutely. So, to be very brief, when the applicant applies for a site disturbance permit and building permit, staff will conduct a review of the site disturbance permit and the construction plans for the building, as well as the parking area, and they will make a determination with regards to the impervious surface ratio requirements in the restricted residential zone to make sure that it complies with the code requirements and that all the stormwater is retained on site and properly treated.
Okay.
That swells and all that good stuff that we didn't grow up with.
Yeah, no, I understand, and, you know, the thing is that there's a, there's a multi-step process for approving this, but, you know, sometimes by approving the first step, it's implied that everything else should happen. And, and so that's what, part of the reason for the question. Yeah, Director Callahan?
Mr. Chairman, the process here ensures that stormwater will be properly handled, because a building permit cannot be issued until a site disturbance permit is issued, and that includes stormwater review.
Condition eight-one-three addresses the site disturbance permit requirements.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Well, with that said, I'm fine with it. I trust everyone else is. Take a motion.
I move that we approve C U P two-five dash zero-zero-zero-four for Bayview Bible Church.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. That concludes our meeting, ten thirty-three. Adjourned.